Well, thanks, everybody. I don't know if you noticed when you came in, we had a couple of things related to this. There's a lot more stuff up there now, but we've got a flyer on the county council and we'll talk a little about county government and there's a one pager on the budget. And I am just going to kind of start by saying a few things about the county in case you don't know what the county does, you're not familiar with it. And I'm fighting a cold, so hopefully I can do this. County, King County has over 2.2 million residents. It's the 13th largest county in the United States in terms of population. More people live in King County than in 15 states. The county covers more territory than the states of Rhode Island or Delaware. So we're talking about a pretty big area that these council members are responsible for. The county covers a variety, a lot of topics, a lot of areas, some of which overlap with the city and some are unique to the county. They have a criminal justice system, district and superior courts, juvenile detention, and adult jails. The King County Sheriff's Office, which covers all the unincorporated areas in King County. They do public health and human services. They are responsible since about the mid-'90s, I think, for metro transit. Bus service, King County International Airport, also known as Boeing Field. They're responsible for sewage treatment, wastewater treatment in the region, regional parks, open space and trails, and they're responsible for the elections, records, and licensing. And each of the nine is nine King County council members. They represent a geographical district of about 240,000 people. And they serve four-year terms. So this is something not to be taken lightly. It's good to be informed and hopefully tonight you can do that. So the format tonight is the executive board of the council, district council, has prepared some questions. We're going to start with those. And we're not going to do official timing on the answers, but if it gets too lengthy, we'll cut you off. We're asking to let you know that we're pretty good here. And then we're going to have time for questions from the floor. And if we don't cover your questions and our questions, feel free to ask something. If it's already been asked, maybe let somebody else ask something different. And Angie's going to ask the first question.
You're going to give me the first question?
Yeah.
Are we going to do openings or is that the first one?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Just thought I'd inquire.
You probably looked over my shoulder, though. All right, actually, the first question is, please tell us a little about yourself and why you feel you're qualified for this position. So that you brought it up.
Well, thank you all so much for being here. My name is Abigail Dorr and I'm running for King County Council District Four as we're all here. The only thing you didn't talk about was that there are nine county council districts. And this district...
I said no.
Did you? Okay, well.
That's all right.
I've been knocking on a lot of...
It's okay to say it again.
So this district's all of northwest Seattle. It's Madison Street downtown all the way up to 145th and everything west of I-5. And I grew up in Spokane, Washington, in a three-generation household. And I have two older sisters and my grandfather lived in their house with us. And my parents worked full-time while raising a really packed household. And I learned what it means to care for your community, what it means to care for the people you love and the community you live in. And I moved to Seattle about 10 years ago. And about 10 years ago, and this is my first time running for office, but I'm not new to working in the community here. I worked in an organization called Transportation Choices Coalition where I led the Sound Transit Three Ballot Initiative, where I led an effort to bring and expand more bus service to our region. I worked for Seattle City Council member Sally Bagshaw and worked really closely with the community that she represented there. And most recently, I led Initiative 1631, the statewide carbon fee initiative. And we lost. We were hosed by Big Oil. They spent $32 million to try to take us down. They were successful, but I looked around at the work that I have done and in the levels of government that I have done, and I looked at King County and thought, there is so much more work we could be doing to make sure we are leading on climate. The county, half the county's budget is essentially our environmental protection entity from how we are running our transit system, which is the biggest emitter of CO2 emissions, to how we are investing in our natural resources and protecting our wastewater treatment and our water. And so I decided to run because I think that most people, I've knocked on, today I've knocked on almost 12, 17,000 doors myself in this district. And most people don't know who represents them or what the county does, but there's a tremendous opportunity to make sure that we are utilizing this office for all it is good. And I thought I ran a bus measure a few years ago. That's expiring at the end of next year. And I really strongly believe we need to, we should have started planning how we're replacing that a long time ago and making sure we're planning it region-wide rather than just in the city of Seattle and exploring how we are, how we are asking and fighting the legislature for more progressive funding sources and making sure that we're doing all that we can to increase the access to transit service across our region. I think I'm probably exceeding this time limit, so I'm sorry. But thank you. And I'm excited to be here.
Excuse me, there's no reflection on you, but I think I'll raise my hand when...
I don't think it's you over there.
It's about two minutes. No, I didn't just know. That way we'll have a little bit of idea. So when I raise my hand, it's time to wrap.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for inviting me. It's great to see so many friends and people I've worked with for so long. I'm Jeannie Colwell. I am your King County Council member. This is the end of my first term and I'm running for reelection. Most of you know me very well and my work in the state senate representing me for a long time. I've lived in the district for 34 years and I've been very involved in the community. I also want to point out to you, we have in the back a little brochure, My Walking Piece for Doorbelling, and there is an insert inside with some of my endorsements. You can also check my website, I have a huge amount of endorsements. Now, why am I standing here? I do want to run for reelection. I have loved serving you on the King County Council. I love being your partner at the county and I'm getting a lot done. I chair the King County Council's Health Housing and Human Services Committee. And just think of all that we're dealing with right now. With behavioral health issues, with issues relating to individuals who are experiencing homelessness, with our determination to increase our supply of affordable housing, with regard to childcare issues, healthcare issues, and so forth. I also this year am the chair of the King County Board of Health. I love doing that. We're planning out our next couple of meetings today. And we have a very serious agenda, working on very important issues which I can share with you. I work very eclectically. And for those of you who've known me for a long time, you know that's true. I work on many issues because I basically have so much I want to get done and so much is in need of getting done. I can comment later on some of the things that have been already brought up. I would like to tell you I'm trying to get over a cold, so I'm not speaking as clearly. I hope I don't start coughing, but I don't think I'm contagious. But with that, I'm welcome for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you both.
So to start with, we came up with three questions on the homelessness topic, which is obviously a huge source of concern for the community. And so I'll be asking those ones and then head off to Tom for transit. And then we have an affordable housing question, a parks question, a couple criminal justice questions, and public health. We're going to try and zoom through a lot just from the board, but then we also want to open it up to questions from the audience. So I know these are big topics and it's hard to move quickly, but if you could just take like a minute or 90 seconds to give a good flavor for where you're at, and then we'll probably end up coming back to some of these topics as people are asking more questions. So the first one is, Seattle has about 30% of the county's population, but 70% of the county's homeless people. What would you propose in support to geographically broaden services so that public safety and health are not concentrated so heavily in the urban areas like Seattle and specifically Ballard? How do we approach it more as a true countywide effort?
Okay, so thanks for that question. Right now, we are in the process of deliberating both in the county and in the city at our respective councils, a new measure that has been proposed by the county executive, Dow Constricting and Mayor Jenny Durkin. I am the lead on this in the county council. And what we're talking about, or what is being proposed, is to consolidate our services. And that's part of the issue. The services are primarily here in Seattle. And the city is paying about $73 million, and that likely will grow, a year for homelessness services, crisis services, getting people into safe housing, providing treatment and so forth. The county spends about $55 million a year. Now, a lot of this is funneled from the federal government, the state government, and so forth. So what is being proposed is to consolidate the services, reduce, lovely, to eliminate redundancy and efficiency. Now, that's something that has real potential, but we are a regional government. And at this current point in time, there's not a lot of buy-in by our suburban cities and the sound cities association. There is not full buy-in on the part of the King County Council either. There is buy-in on the part of the city council. The city is the one that has most of the money. So they, of course, want to have a large part in saying what will be determined. A lot of it will be increasing funds by saving inefficiencies and wastes that contribute to those costs. But we have a long ways to go on that. We're also getting, we're looking at more ways to be innovative, such as modular housing that can be picked up and transported to another place when the need is there.
So we're actually going to, we'll touch on that in another question, so that's a great place.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I'm supportive of the merger between the county and the city's homelessness response programs. I think deduplicating our overhead on these projects is long overdue. I think it should have been done, we should have begun this process a long time ago. But the question is really also about how are we making sure that Seattle isn't the place where people who are experiencing homelessness end up? And so merging this response program is a lot about how are we using the resources and the places we already have now better, which is really important. I mean, East King County spent, Councilmember Claudia Valde-Cheese spent a very long time in fighting for a mental shelter in Bellevue, which is one of the only shelters like that outside of Seattle. And I think that was an incredible testament of her leadership. We have to make sure we are incentivizing and partnering across the region to making sure we have more opportunities and more spaces like that. Another, and I know we're going to touch on affordable housing as well, but we need 244,000 units of just low-income affordable housing in the next 20 years. We do not have a funding plan or a path to how we're going to build it. And it is critical that it is not just built in Seattle. And right now, there's only one low-income housing developer in East King County who has the, who has the organization and the tools to develop that work. So making sure we are building our affordable housing and partnering across our region to build the much-needed affordable housing we need that's not just in the city of Seattle, that's around our urban centers, in and around transit hubs across King County will require immense partnership and... But I think that's, that's in addition to the work that absolutely is happening on consolidating our immediate, our immediate homelessness response programs. But we have to do them both at the same time. We can and must do both at the same time.
Great. So next question, I don't know if you guys prefer to like answer two back-to-back, so one person's going first.
We have ping pong!
Do you have a preference? Do you want me to go with Abigail again next?
Sure, that works.
Okay. All right, so this one is regarding modular housing. King County is building modular housing on Elliot Avenue, just south of here. It's faced delays in opening on schedule. Given the state of the emergency and the available budget, is modular housing an appropriate option? And what do you recommend for taking things to scale and acting more urgently?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this project. I think this is always sort of the idea of this project was that this is something we can move really, really quickly and affordably.
Could you talk to us, too?
Yes, thank you. This is something we can move quickly and affordably to do, to build something other than, something other than just immediate, just immediate shelter. I think that it's an important tool in the toolbox and I think that we need to be looking at additional options. But again, how we are housing people immediately is really important and I, I'm excited to try new different options, but we also need to make sure we are planning and investing in our long-term low-income affordable housing plan, which we do not have a plan for. Permanent supportive housing is an extremely effective tool if we are planning and are resourcing these at earth's long term.
Okay, so first of all, I was, Wes mentioned we would be addressing affordable housing, so I'm not certain I have five at this moment. We need to do a whole lot. Modular housing is one component of it. The Elliott Bay site came up when I first started on the council in 2016. It was John Arthur Wilson, our assessor, who came up with that because it was going to be several's land. So we started working on that. I was able to get $3 million through David Frogg, State Senator David Frogg, who was chairing, initially was the ranking member on the Senate Ways and Means Committee for Capitol Budget. And then he became the lead when the Democrats took over the majority. And so they were able to put $3 million in for modular housing. And so that is a big help now. We also located a modular housing project in Kent or Auburn, I'm sorry, and we've got one going up in Georgetown, Soho. The one in Elliott Bay has its controversies. And the main reason is because Catholic Community Services will be staffing it, operating it, but it also is planned to be a no-barrier enhanced shelter so that people can be, can be housed there and there will be 24/7, round-the-clock enhanced services and treatment programs. And so nobody is going to be turned away because they have behavioral health issues, they have drug disorders, they have chemical dependency. That frightens a lot of people. For me, it's better to get people inside and get the help than, than they're going out other places and not having the support they need. There will be greater demand for individuals to be there than there will be spaces available, which indicates we still have a lot more to do. It's costly. We have to get the money from somewhere besides the three and eight from the state. So there's a lot of work going on, and I think it's a good idea to go forward.
All right, and then one more topic in this category. How should the county respond to RV parking for those whose home is the RV? Is sleeping in vehicles a good strategy for the county to pursue versus providing an indoor bed for people and the vehicle parks outside?
Thank you. So from what I understand currently, this is really a city issue when we're talking about here. The county does not engage in as much of that, but it is one way that we can proceed. I have a lot of discomfort with the concept of families and kids in vehicles. I've understood that there's a very large proportion of kids in Fremont in school who are sleeping in vehicles with their families. I don't think that's a desirable way to go. I think there's a lot of concern in the neighborhoods for that. However, I'd rather have people inside than outside, especially as we're facing the winter moods. Right now, the county is not embarking on that as a viable option. But I'm sure it's being done, but it's not something that we're deliberately intentionally setting up.
Yeah, and I largely agree with that. I think that I, I do not, it is not ideal that we have neighbors and family members. I think, I was out knocking on doors and my hands are very cold tonight and I couldn't stop thinking of our neighbors who are, are unhoused and don't have a place to go and making sure that people who, if, if, if the very immediate option is an RV housing, I think that is, that is, I'm supportive of helping people find, and it is a city issue, but helping people find space to park them. And the industry around how, how RVs are leased is a predi, is somewhat of a predatory practice. And I think working with the city of Seattle to make sure that we're, there are good arrangements in place to make sure that we're protecting the people who are paying money to, to be in the, to live in that type of housing. I will also add that, I just lost my train of thought. I was looking at you, Dean, but that around parking and around the scofflaw, the scofflaw around RVs is that people who are living in RVs will get tickets. And these are people who are living in RVs, are living in RVs at their very, their most vulnerable moment. And making sure that we are not criminalizing this work, but helping people get access to permanent housing, get access to, to safe places to park that are welcoming for, that are good, healthy and good for our communities and neighborhoods, but also that people who are living in RVs aren't being weighed down by unnecessary parking, parking violations.
Okay, thanks. Next, we're going to move on to the transportation. And the first one has to do with Sound Transit.
What do you know?
What do you know? Regarding light rail to Ballard. Long time wait. What's your position on a tunnel and underground station near 20th and Martin versus an overhead connection to a service station east of 15th Northwest?
So the question is, the difference, what do you prefer, the tunnel or the elevated station?
Yes, if you were an advocate, if you were on the Sound Transit board?
Yeah. I will say first, and my background's in transit and transportation, I led the Sound Transit Three Ballot Initiative. And it is, first and foremost, it is so great that we have, we have funding in place now to get light rail to Ballard. I think the second thing that I hear the most about is people want it in their lifetimes. And so let's do all that we can to get light rail to Ballard in our lifetimes. And so the two decisions that are in place are, there's several options, that first and foremost, we need as a Sound Transit board to make a decision by the end of 2020 on one alignment. That will speed up the decision-making process going down. And to answer your question, I, I'm excited about a tunneling option. That doesn't mean I'm totally and completely beholden to it. I want to see the data and the analysis on what can get us that project, that alignment delivered as fast as possible, what's the least construction impact, and what's the most affordable, affordable way to do it. And I will also add that I'm really, I'm also carrying lit for voting, and I know you're supporting this as well, encouraging folks to vote no on 976. This is Tim Imman's latest hoopla to, that would really gut all of the transportation projects that we have in place. So I, I'm excited about the potential for a tunnel to Ballard. I also want to make sure we are realistic about the funding opportunities and making sure that we're delivering it on time. And most importantly, that the board is getting to a decision by the end of 20, by the end of 2020.
Thank you.
So I have been through this quite a bit, representing Ballard. You all remember Rod Matson from before, Mr. Mayor, unofficial mayor of Ballard, the neighborhood service center of Rod. And he, he called me up one time years and years ago, and it was when the RTA was going to be on the ballot that was the precursor to Sound Transit. And the ballot measure had failed. So he called me up and said, Jeannie, would you come on in? And I did, and the two of us convened a large group of about, I think, 20 communities from Everett down to Tacoma to talk about what we could do. And what we determined was that to have a second ballot measure succeed, Ballard had to be part of the compromise because Ballard would bring in the votes. Very engaged citizenry here. And so we went to work and I believe that Ballard was instrumental in getting that passed. We also asked for one thing that we still have not gotten, and I'll get to your question. And that was at least a stop at Sunset Hill on the commuter rail to go into the city. We still do not have that. Many of us lobbied Sound Transit, we still haven't gotten that. But I favor getting to Ballard as fast as we can. I prefer a tunnel and I prefer certainly a station in 20th rather than a 15th or 60th. There'll be a lot more cost, as I understand it, to go to and obviously go to a tunnel. So I want to see what is, is brought out and what the Sound Transit board will do. And I've been encouraging Ballard people to be sure to weigh in on this, but we've got to get here. I also, by the way, was on the Seattle Monorail Project Board as an executive member. Now, think 2009, we would have had that if it had been longer.
Thank you.
Think, think 1969.
No, it was not.
No, no, I'm adding to the forward thrust was 1969.
2009 was the year that the Monorail would have been finished completing.
Thank you, 1972, actually.
Wasn't it 69 or 72?
It was in the 70s. Boeing was going to build it in the 70s. Okay, moving on. This is a Metro question. And the county, as I said earlier, has governance of Metro Transit. About five years ago, Metro eliminated all off-peak services up and down 32nd Northwest, resulting in no missed service midday, nights, or weekends. This has left the Sunset Hill neighborhood with no access to the public transit system other than peak hours weekday. Similarly, residents along Seaview Avenue do not have any access to public transit. Yet residents in these areas continue to pay transit taxes. What would you propose to provide access to these residents' public transit?
Well, I have to say, I've been working a lot on these issues. And the first step has been along Seaview Avenue. And a couple of people that I came and asked about, my staffer, John, was coming because he had spent so much time out at Sunset West. So what we started doing about, almost two years, a year and a half ago, starting to have meetings along Shilshil and at Sunset West condo. And we got Metro to come out and to set up a survey, which was taken around all, all there with businesses, residents, neighbors, and so forth. And came up with some ideas. They reported that, and this took a long time. They reported back to us two months ago, something like that, with some options, which none of us really liked that well. They have said they're committed to start a pilot. At first, it was going to be the end of this year, and now it's the beginning of next year. We're still waiting to see and getting more input. So that's going forward of some sort. I mean, it's not only the residents, it's not only the businesses, but it's also all the people going to go to the gardens in the summer. And I mean, a lot of them don't like going anymore because, you know, there's no bus, there's no parking, basically. It's very, very hard to find. But we also have to deal with the urgency of the transit on Sunset Hill, too, of this way. I've had so many fights with Metro since I've started here. You probably know the waterfront, all the transit was taken away understandably with all that was going on with construction and taking down the viaduct. Moved 99 route to Elliot Avenue, and then they let me know they're eliminating that it wasn't the ridership, ridership and then the trolley construction with utilities down Iron Square. So I thought about a stop at the 29 at First and Broad. It's like pulling teeth, it's really hard. And right now, the C, D, and E rapid ride lines are the busiest, as I understand Jeff, you probably know, but that's my understanding in the whole county. So obviously, our council is fighting very hard to increase ridership. There's also the cost, there's also the balance on, on where we come up with those decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is one of the, I think this is one of the hardest conversations to have with Metro. In part because Metro, Metro, their, their big picture, they want to make sure they're moving as many people as fast as possible. moving as many people as fast as possible. So they, they have a history of moving all the service into these high, these really high ridership routes during commuter hours. So I, and I don't own a car, I take the bus everywhere. And I, you know, I've somehow managed to navigate this whole district while running for office, and I've gotten to see, you know, every, every inch of every neighborhood on how we, how we get reliable transit to these places. I think Councilmember Coles really discussed well what sort of conversations happen, but it is a balance. And I want to talk about the opportunity we have in the future to both expand our transit service and increase, and increase service in these local routes during non-peak hours. So that's critical. If we're really going to reduce our carbon footprint, if we're really going to be able to give people opportunities to get out of their cars, we need to make sure we're providing high-quality service, not just for people who are trying to get to work. And that is the type of service that Metro is really, Metro's main focus has been how are we moving people during peak hours during, to get to and from work? I, I'm excited to, as Northgate opens, I think there's a really tremendous opportunity to have a conversation about what our east-west connections are, how do we, how do we, it's going to be a very difficult conversation on how do we restructure service to accommodate the growth of light rail? And with, and as we're, and I am really supportive of expanding our, our transportation benefit district to a King County-wide transportation benefit district, so that we're both adding resources locally so that we can provide those excellent services, those excellent services to 15th and 16th.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question, maybe with a brief answer for both of you. I've, I've been involved in that study that Jean mentioned, that we're working with Sunset West, John has as well. And as you said, many of the options that Metro proposed were worth much so far. One of the suggestions, though, was for Sunset Hill, and I'm going to give two, two options that you can comment on. One was to reroute some of the Route 40 buses down 32nd. That would be a fairly straightforward fix to have maybe every third bus come up and down 32nd. And the other would be to, maybe subsidize Uber and Lyft trips where the residents would get, say, a couple of vouchers, two or three vouchers a month, or five vouchers, and Metro would pay the difference between the bus fare and what the Uber ride costs to get into Ballard, not to anywhere we could get into Ballard. We'll start with that.
Yeah, I mean, I would, it's a hard, I mean, my reference is to always make sure we're investing in the transit, the transit options first, and to make sure we are considering the transit route before we're introducing additional rideshare services. One service that, sorry, you wanted this to be a straightforward question. One service that Ken has piloting and I worked on when I was at Transportation Choices was the media program. So around the light rail hubs, there's a fair program. I think it's great that Metro is looking at flexible options to make sure that we're providing these services, but I always want to make, how are we actually providing people the bus service is my, my first priority.
I'll keep it short, we've been pushing on Metro for just that. What do we run?
Okay, thanks. Reroute. You heard it here.
What was the answer?
Reroute.
Of what 40? To reroute the 40?
Yeah.
Some, some trips.
Some, it's living on.
Some trips, yeah. Evening, hopefully. All day. All right, I think we'll move on. Jody has a question.
I think she wrote hers down.
Yeah.
I wrote it down. This, this is the issue of affordable housing. Part of the real crux of the issue is how much the city and the county and other, you know, the state and federal government can cooperate so that we actually get affordable housing. When you hear that 2,000 or 6,000 houses are going to be built in the next 10 years is not terribly encouraging. Also, there's, there is a cycle where the city needs more taxes, so it encourages housing developments to get the taxes, which leaves us with less affordable housing. So we, what we'd like to know is how the city can, the county can work with the city to assure that we have a better housing mix, because we certainly don't have it now.
Okay, so a couple of things. One is, the county can do so much, but we are not, we don't have the authority to determine the zoning and the permitting in the city of Seattle, or any of the cities that have that. We can determine what it will be in the unincorporated areas of the county. However, in saying that, as was mentioned, we have had, we're doing a lot of work on regional affordable housing. I disagree totally with my opponent on one thing. We started, and it was Claudia Belducci, who was the key, the lead sponsor, and I was the sponsor to create this Regional Affordable Housing Task Force that began meeting two years ago last June. And we finished up last December. We came up with two recommendations, well, a lot of recommendations. There were, I believe, seven or eight goals with sub-goals. And, but what we learned was, we had to have about 44,000 new affordable housing units in the county within five years. So that, it'll now be four years this coming December. And 244,000 affordable new units or preserved units or whatever by the year 2040. Now, what is incorrect in what she said, and I was at the meeting, she was not, I've been in on all of the discussions, she has not been in any. We came up with recommendations, one of which was, can I just finish? One, one of which was to create, because the, the authority was over that last December, to create under the province of the, the Grass Management Planning Council, a new permanent affordable housing committee. I'm on that. And it's, we've got coalition, we have partners from all over the private sector, the business sector, the faith community, you know, across the board. And our charge now is to determine how we are going to implement the goals, part of which recommendations are, what will be the new revenue source and how will we obtain a ballot measure, whatever it may be. We are working very hard on this, and we have to do it regionally. We're not a city council. And that's what we are embarking on, and we're taking it seriously, and we're getting a lot of forward momentum.
This is, I think, one of the most important issues, and I think that, I mean, it is, we talk about homelessness quite a lot. We are experiencing this issue because we are growing really quickly. And I do not think that as a region, we have adequately planned for, we have not adequately planned for the growth that we are, we are experiencing. I think that for our trans, for our Sound Transit corridor, we have planned for the housing, we have the future Sound Regional Council, who oversees and is the hierarchy for our comprehensive plans, but we have not created a structure that is intentionally planning or thinking about our regional housing investments. And I, I am frustrated, right? I think I am frustrated as a constituent, as a community member here, that the county spent 18 months essentially coming away with what the problem is that we are experiencing. We need a whole lot of housing. And I, my background is in bringing together people to address and have, have big funding conversations. It was not easy bringing people together to put together a $54 billion, 20-year plan for Sound Transit 3. It is hard work, I know that it is hard work, but that is not the bold work that hap, that spent, that council committee spent 18 months working on. It's going to be about $500 million, an estimate of $500 million a year for the next 20 years to invest in just the 0% to 30% of the area median income housing that we need. We do not have a plan, and I, I feel like we've been wasting time on putting this plan together. I, I see her wrestling, this is hard, this is what competitive elections are for. But this is the leadership I'm demanding, right? And it is not the bold leadership that we need. And it is not just 0% to 30% area median income housing we need. We need a whole lot of workforce housing, we need a whole lot of middle-income housing. And I do believe we need to be spending the money and, and have a conversation immediately about, and going to ballot immediately across the region to utilize the sales tax capacity we do have, so we can also use King County's bond capacity immediately. I think the conversations on how we, how we fund, and how we progressively fund housing need to be happening, and need to be happening in a much more bold and visible way with much more community engagement. A subcommittee, to me, is not the work that needs to be done to really address this housing crisis.
Okay, Don's got a question there.
Yeah, this is a question on parks. In August, King County voters overwhelmingly approved an $810 million Parks Levy. What is your vision for using that money, Councilmember Coles?
It's my turn. You can go.
No.
Thank you for protecting my trigger. I, I, I mean, parks and our recreational landscapes are one of the most incredible parts of our, of our region. I first, the first campaign I really got involved with in Seattle was the Seattle Parks District Measure, which created a staple dedicated funding source for our parks. I want to make sure that 40% of the money that's being generated out of this $800 million levy is coming from the city of Seattle, and making sure that we are investing those resources into protecting and expanding our own green spaces here in Seattle is absolutely critical. But I also think making sure we are expanding the, expanding the forested land that the county is preserving and protecting is really, really critical as well. Our trail system, our, this money also goes to invest in the zoo, and now the aquarium, which I'm supportive of, I think those are worthwhile conservation efforts. Another thing I would also like to see, and I'm assuming we have the Ballard P patch folks here, I also want to make sure that we are thinking and working closely with the City's Parks Department and the City's Department of Neighborhoods, on mapping out the, the land that we are, I'll finish, and, and creating a fund dedicated to land that we are, we're leasing at below-market rate. What we're experiencing about P patch is heartbreaking to watch, and we got to make sure we're doing all that we can to preserve that open community space. I think it's also critical that we're partnering and working to protect, there's several other properties around the city that are significantly used at, at below-market rate that we need to be thinking and planning long-term, so that in these dense areas, we have these essential community spaces.
Thank you.
So I am very pleased to be the sponsor of the Parks Levy, of the ordinance to place the measure on the ballot. We worked very hard, and we ended up, as I recall, with the unanimous vote on the council, which doesn't happen that frequently for placing a measure on the ballot. So a whole lot of work was done before voters voted for it. And we knew it was critical to have Seattle voters be there, but we couldn't do it with Seattle voters alone. So there is, there's, there are great opportunities in there. I worked very hard to make sure that P patches would be eligible, I would put Mary Jean and others on this. And I asked that question in the committee hearing we had last week about this, and it was, no, it was yesterday, actually, it was determined that, yes, P patches will be eligible. A lot of the funds that will flow into Seattle will be in urban parks, categories that will come from the city of Seattle's decision on where the grants will go. But it's a fabulous, fabulous opportunity, I'm very excited. I'm also very excited that one of my amendments that was approved is going forward, the work is starting up on that, and that is to create a youth conservation corps that would include kids from Seattle, include kids from around the county for summer jobs, and to learn how to get involved with conservation, especially kids who have not had much experience with open space and green spaces and trails and all of that.
Thank you. Great, so we have two criminal justice questions, two public health questions, and just after 8 o'clock, we'll switch over to audience questions. So thank you, everyone, for your patience. Well. Okay, so this question is, last week, city businesses in Seattle released a report that criticized the city for not prosecuting repeat offenders for misdemeanors and minor felonies. This is also likely an issue at the county level. What is your vision for how the county can better respond to the repeat offender issue?
So the repeat offender issue is a very important one, and of course, we know more of what's going on in Seattle. Our county prosecutor, Dan Satterberg, is very, I believe, very thoughtful and very genuine in terms of trying to, number one, not block up people in the criminal justice system who shouldn't be there, but also to determine that we do everything possible to keep repeat offenders. Now, our King County Executive came out with a proposal in his recommended omnibus supplemental budget that we're now working on in our budget committee. And that is to open up what's called the West Wing, but it's not actual jail space anymore, but it's co-located or next to the King County Jail. And we have a shelter on the first play, first floor now, and it's, it's not a permanent shelter, I think it's up to 30 days, but there are, there's space on the second and third floor. And why bringing this up is because it will require some funding from the council, but it will be geared toward those individuals who are not violating serious law in effect, but are doing the disruptive things, that they're knocking over trash cans, they're running through people's yards, and they're just the things that are really bothersome, and they're not, and many of them need some type of counseling services and treatment. So we're hopefully going to be funding that. At the King County Jail, both in Canton and downtown, we have, no, I don't think we have the best situation, we need to do more. There's a fine line, and I know a lot of people in Ballard do not appreciate understandably when there are people who are misbehaving, I'll put it that way, for a number of reasons. You can't lock people up for being homeless, but if they commit crimes, they should have the penalties, and that's the bottom line for me. So we're working with the prosecutor.
Thank you. And I am supportive of what the county executive has proposed. I think that's a, that is a really reasonable and measured response to how we are built, how we are addressing repeat offenders. One program that I do think needs more investment and more support is our Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Our case managers for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, in the ideal world, they will have 25 clients to one case manager. Right now, there's 40 clients to one case manager. It is, it is, it is a critical investment that we're making to make sure that, and for you guys who don't know, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program is for low-level, low-level offenders. Law enforcement will refer, refer folks to a case manager who within 15 minutes comes to intervene and help connect those people to any sort of barrier, any sort of service that they may need to help them get the help that they need. Because we know that jailing people who are committing these crimes is just going to be a cycle after cycle. The program is proven to work by the data, but we are constantly under-resourcing it. And making sure that we are adequately investing in our case managers is absolutely critical and not something I've really seen a lot of leadership from on the council or from city council members, frankly.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's a good segue. The second criminal justice question actually has to do with LEED, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, and other non-traditional programs. And I just wanted to quickly insert, the only data for LEED that was collected was from a 2011 to 2014 time period.
Right.
And so as the years tick by, the same that it's evidence-based, it was a different era for a very specific geographical area, police resourcing, especially in the city of Seattle, continues to kind of dwindle, not build up. So there's a lot about that data that isn't necessarily totally relevant to where we are right now with the drug epidemic. are right now with the drug epidemic and mental health crisis. So with that, as our criminal justice system reforms and as non-traditional programs like LEED continue to expand, how can the county provide better public reporting and accountability on what the local impacts and outcomes are of non-traditional programs?
No, I think it's absolutely critical that we're studying, getting the data and resources, but we also have to make sure we're investing in case managers, investing in the training and support with our law enforcement officers. And I will also add that the piece that are, the pieces of puzzle that's missing in a lot of these programs that our case managers tell us is housing. 80% of the people who are in the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program are experiencing homelessness, and we cannot get them stable, get them out of our streets, causing harm to themselves and our community if we are not providing people housing first option. So it is case management and adequate housing, and we need to make sure that we are both investing in these programs, that we have data that shows that they have worked, and also we need to make sure we're continuing to collect that data so that we can continue to prove that this is a model that works, but also that if there are improvements that need to be made in it, if there are community-based tweaks that need to be approved on it, that's really necessary. And I do know that some of the LEED supervisors have been wary about sharing data until it ends a certain period or there's a certain period. I also think we need to make sure we're transparent and fully engaging on those.
So I'm glad Abigail brought this up before. I actually should have mentioned it. I'm on the advisory committee for LEED. It was first started in Belltown, it's been expanding, and it's now sought after in many communities. There have been a lot of visits by communities in other parts of the country. So it's really gaining a lot of prominence. I think it's an outstanding program, but it is underfunded, mainly underfunded from the city of Seattle, not from the county. We still, though, need to do more with it, but it's a good example of a program that can work. It needs to be monitored. Yes, there needs to be more services, there need to be more services, more housing opportunities for it to be long-lasting for people who are involved, and it's an outstanding program.
Okay, thank you. All right, so John, do you need a topic?
I got it.
What topic is this? Public health, yeah, and then audience.
Pardon me if I have a little bit of a fall over. I'm going to sit down. I'm moving on, so it's a little hard. Public health. What is your position on safe consumption sites in the county? And if you support them, would you be made able to locating them outside of the city of Seattle and other areas of the county?
Okay, so our Board of Health, two years ago, voted unanimously in support of a pilot project in the county, and that has not started yet. And we know that there are a lot of controversies. I do support establishing a pilot project in King County. Now, there are some provisions here that are really essential to understand. One is, if a pilot project could only go into a neighborhood that wanted it, there would have to be a public process. So say someone proposed it in Belltown or Ballard, Magnolia, whatever. I don't think that would happen because there's not the demand there that there is in some of the areas, but I don't believe that there would be a community embracing of that. Capitol Hill Community Council has repeatedly asked for one to be cited there. This got tied up in a lawsuit and in the courts. To me, though, I believe strongly that we need to get people help and we need to make the community and the public safe as well. My nephew died of an overdose, my husband's nephew and mine, and then his father, my husband's brother, died a year after that of alcoholism and drug, prescriptive drug abuse. You get people inside where they're not going to leave dirty needles in streets and kids' parks and McDonald's bathrooms. You get them inside, and the idea is to build trust with a public health professional, most likely a nurse, to be able to observe them, not give them drugs, give them clean needles, use a clean syringe. If they go into an overdose, they're given naloxone to reverse the effects of overdose, continually trying to get the people into treatment, build up that trust, because some people won't do it. They're ashamed, they're recidivated, relapsed, whatever it is. So I'm interested in saving people's lives and I'm interested in helping out communities.
I think you were really eloquent when you talked about this, and I agree. I am supportive of safe injection sites. I don't, I think it's a tool, in the toolbox of our public health options for helping people get to treatment. I also believe it should only be in communities that want safe injection sites, and I also, but I also believe we need to be looking at how we're addressing this issue holistically. And this is one tool in the toolbox. There are many other tools in our harm, in our both our treatment, our harm reduction, and how you're getting people who are experiencing addiction access to these services.
So the second part of this question is, have you looked at what Snohomish County is doing in kind of the quiet thing? Is that something to do with your?
Would you describe it for us?
Well, they have put together some things along the same line, the sites and putting together counseling programs, and they've been very impressive at doing these programs.
Yeah, they're not doing any, I don't heard any discussion of the safe consumption sites, but they do have the jail diversion program. They have the facility running already, and they've moved a lot more quickly toward that and doing a lot more kind of like the navigation-style outreach where they have community services going out.
I do believe we have people attached there as well. I think the Snohomish County model is a really great one to look at. I have not physically been there. I've heard great stories, great stories about this program. It's jail diversion program and another diversion program that has space for people to go counseling and the holistic services, and I think that's an exceptional model. I also think we are lacking in adequate medicated assisted services around King County. I think there's mobile vans for people who are medicated to stay stable while experiencing or while managing their addiction. And I think, you know, I've toured Evergreen Treatment Services in the past, and some of the holistic services they provide, I think, are really important, and I think building out facility for different jail diversion programs is a really, I think, is a great model.
So two years ago, so two and a half years ago, the Joint Task Force on Heroin and Prescriptive Opioid Drug Addiction Task Force mounted its eight recommendations. And this was chaired by, at that time, Mayor Murray, King County Executive Doug Constantine, and Auburn Mayor Nancy Baccus. And I was not on it. The recommendations came to the Board of Health, which approved them all unanimously. One of the ones that is currently activated was the mobile vans with medical-assisted treatment services that's going around the county on a scheduled basis to go to senior centers, very low-income, you know, it's not the medical treatment. They're not providing any injection services or sites, anything like that. But there are a series of these recommendations, and they're gradually being all implemented. We need to do a huge amount more. The opioid crisis is not diminishing. It's getting worse. We are taking this up at the King County Board of Health all the time.
Can you just clarify, have you, we're just curious if you've also been looking at what Snohomish County or other counties, like, outside of King County, where I'd be also?
Public health, yeah, King County, yes, looking at all of it. So I cannot tell you about my lessons from this. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. No one has any questions? I can see you. I'll try to.
Keep them short and on a single topic, so we can try and.
Yeah, and we're going to give, again, it's a minute to answer two of those questions. And we'll start with.
Okay, so I mentioned in the beginning, I live in the Crown Hill Urban Village, and my understanding is that the end of the negotiation process for the adoption of those boundaries, extra density was added to this location in order to make that the highest-density urban village in the city of Seattle. And so with that in mind, I would like to ask each of you where you would place the importance of pea patches and green spaces in relation to other competing interests for public funding in our increasingly dense urban villages? Because we're going to have thousands of new people moving in. Well, now we're proposing to take away parks and pea patches. So in your pantheon of wants, where would you put that?
Why don't we start with Jim?
So, hi, Mary Jean. I can't answer that specifically to the city of Seattle. That's not a normal jurisdiction in the county. I certainly have my own preferences as a citizen. I want to have as much open space as we can. Throughout my time in the Senate, I was able to get funding for quite a few of the parks inbound, Webster, Playground, the North Carotage Museum, the Ballard Parks Park, the Hocke Park, there are a whole lot of them to go back to. But that's really critical for not only our opportunity to engage with our nature, which is vastly diminishing in the area here, but it's also important for our environment and our health. Having the trees is really critical. And part of what we're wanting to do with the parks is also to build, I mean, to plant more trees. And it's important for our mental health, for our emotional health, for our kids to be able to play. But those are my priorities as a citizen here.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way in which the county can even invest is incentivizing with investments and with, through the Conservation Futures, Futures Investments in the parks and other places, but that is sort of the dilemma that we have, right? So how are we growing and how are we making sure that we're creating walkable, fragrant, livable communities that are connected to transit? And I think the way I envision this and the way my work is connected with this is, we need to make sure we're caring and are thoughtful about how transit, the metro of King County runs, how transit is connected to our dense communities and how they are walkable and how are they connected to our parks and green spaces. I will also, at our schools, we do, I would say, as transit entities and as a planning community, we don't do a great job of connecting our elementary schools, our high schools to transit. I had a woman today who, I just heard, she goes to Ingram and lives in Crown Hill and has to take two buses to school, so they have the rates. We don't plan, we're not planning or coordinating our transit system with our parks and with these spaces as well. And I will add, I know my time's up, I'm sorry, it is critical that we're preserving and maintaining the green space that we do have, and that's something that the county can influence.
Thank you. Jack?
Yes, my name is Jack Zer. I submitted Abigail's website, and I saw several videos, one of which dated the time that you were working for TCC as your advocacy for the Center City Counter Streetcar, which is a project that's sort of shared by the city and county. The city would fund it, but the county would operate it. And my sense is that you probably still support it, the current ATCC supports it, and the previous ATCC is down to mayor, she's trying to fund it.
Oh, well, can I do that?
Yeah, so I wonder if it's really good for district four transit riders and pedestrians because it's so expensive. I think there's probably $100 million of city capital in play, there's operating funds, the first line of the rider way to be better used. We need sidewalks on too frequent transit corridors in District Four, Aurora and Greenwood don't have sidewalks. And so it just seems to me that the city could spend the money better. We can have better transit in downtown if we didn't have the Center City Counter Streetcar.
Yeah, so I am supportive of the streetcar project. Our, how we sort of ended up with streetcar in Seattle is sort of an odd, we don't need to go down the history of where it's at. I think it makes a lot of sense to connect, to connect the South Lincoln Streetcar and the First Hill Streetcar. I think the ridership numbers are really promising and a dedicated rider way. I also am frustrated that the city moved forward with the federal grant application without consulting the city council at the time, and that was what the city council were saying. And I am, and then the federal government has awarded a grant for that project. I would be, I'm really, we have to accept that funding. If we do not, it puts funding for other transportation projects, including some transit projects, Ballard, in jeopardy if we do not accept that funding. I think let's get this project done and let's be proud of that streetcar system that we have and not extend it any further. I do fully agree with you on Aurora and on Cleveland Avenue. It is, I mean, you go to Shoreline and Shoreline North, and it's just the what Aurora looks like north is like. It is literally in a different city, but it is baffling to me, the lack of investment and intentional work that has been done on the streetscape around Aurora and the land use development potential that is on Aurora. And what I would like to see for the E, which is the single, the E is the largest, the largest, I was just getting queued up, has the, is the largest bus ridership in the state of Washington. I would love to see how we're making that bus, a more robust bus route of transit, actual BRT, there's different levels, it doesn't even make the charts for the quality of it, so that we are creating economic development opportunities, utilizing the affordable housing opportunities along that corridor. And I think there's a tremendous amount of potential for the King County Council to engage in that, in that corridor in a more intentional way.
Another question?
Did Jeanie want to answer that one?
I agree with Jack.
Okay.
I'd say I.
Oh, did he get to answer?
No.
Sorry.
No, I agree with Jack, because I've been really skeptical about this streetcar line, and especially when we have no real road and stops in North Walton on the water. I'm still working on that. I just, I don't see the ridership there that's worth the cost. The benefits do not outweigh the cost for me at this point.
How about the side of the room?
Okay.
Me?
You.
Oh, okay. My question has to do with the regional homeowners authority, and I'm worried about where those are going to go. In my last two, eight years of volunteering, I've been working with people who are in vehicles, but the one I count said half in shelter are in vehicles. They have received no services to speak up from anybody, particularly the city. But how do you see your role as a county, if you've got a council member, getting funds to those areas that are needed when that regional authority goes into effect? And effectively, I think that moves us in trouble.
Very interesting time. I have meetings constantly on this new proposed King County homelessness authority, regional homelessness authority. I had one today with some of my colleagues on my council I brought in together as a leadership team on this, and I told the Department of Community and Human Services and the executive staff, chief of, deputy chief of staff, we don't have the votes. We do not have the votes. That is the reality. Abigail mentions we should have done this a long time ago. Being a regional policymaker is not. Being a regional policymaker is not easy. It's not being on the city council where there's so much life hanging. We do not have the votes to get there. People think it's a good idea, and I think it is, to consolidate, to reduce redundancy so that more of the funds will go to the actual services, crisis response. But we don't have the votes. So what we, I've been working with our staff to come up with some various options, and I broke the news to the executive this afternoon. So all I can say is stay tuned, it's not going to happen overnight. If it does, if it does happen, it's going to be different than what's been proposed. There's a lot being given up in this measure, such as elected officials having the authority to make budget decisions, to make personnel decisions, not to get in the weeds and need to agree. We want experts to do that. So this is going to be a lengthier process than people have realized.
And we need to learn to lobby better.
Yes.
Tell us how.
Okay. We'll talk.
Yeah, I mean, I do think this, this, I, you know, this homelessness, the homelessness crisis we're experiencing isn't new. I mean, we, we, our mayor and executive declared a state of emergency in 2015 and this was, I do believe, a recommendation that we should have done a long time ago. I do think you are right, the devil's in the details, and I think that getting suburban cities on board is really critical. And I do know how regional governance works. That is what I've done with Sound Transit, which is a regional entity. And it takes a lot of, it does take a lot of work, but I think we have to get there. We have to get to a place where our elected officials are setting big picture priorities, including making sure that they're responding to what is, that we're investing in, in what our data is showing that our people are experiencing homelessness. And that we are, we are giving the professionals the tools to make the decisions on where they go.
Would be your decision?
No, I think, I think making sure that there is a framework that elected officials are overseeing, but I do believe that, I do believe that it's important that we have professionals who are guiding that process and are more engaged in that process. I've, I've seen me lobby the city council before when I worked for Sally, and you're very effective. And I think that's really, and, but with limited resources, I think that the council needed more guidance to make sure that we are, we are more effectively addressing the investments towards where those services should be, are must be needed.
Thank you. Uh, Jill?
Yes, on the public health theme, not about safe injection size, please, something else like for the rest of us. What are your priorities in public health spending for the county and the upcoming levies? For, Jeanie, don't we have a King County hospital? You didn't mention that. King County has a hospital. It's really big, the Regional Trauma Center.
Harvard.
Yeah, it is. And the Medic One is coming up too. These are lifesaving. That's why I'm here. Ten years ago, Medic One picked me up and took me to the county hospital. So how are we going to boulard that framework for those of us, particularly the aging ones?
Okay, so in fact, I had, we had a discussion, I had a regional policy committee this afternoon, Dean Paul Ramsey, who is the dean of the University of Washington Medical School and the CEO of the medical center, now executive vice president. He came for the policy committee to talk about all those issues. Now, one of the issues that we addressed with him was that Harborview are fabulous, fabulous, regional hospital, medical center, number, a class A trauma center, is in bad state, really bad state, and Stefan, you know that.
I can't say that, but you can.
You know that.
Yeah, I worked there. We've been through the day.
You worked there, and we've been talking about it. But we're looking at likely next year on the ballot in November, a capital campaign fund for, for Harborview Medical Center. It's got to be done, it's got to be expanded, but it's got to be saved too. And so that's coming up. Also, like you said, the Medic One. We have serious healthcare issues here, health funding. Now, what we have at Public Health Seattle, King County, working with the Board of Health, is a huge effort that's been going on for far too long to get more of our core foundational funding from the legislature. They're not stepping up. So we're never caught up with all the needs that we have, but we're still stellar. The, it's, the director of King County, Seattle King County Public Health, Patty Hayes, is going back to the big meeting next week. She'll miss our Board of Health meeting. And we're one of, we're the ninth largest metropolitan area public health center in the whole country. We do serious work here, but we are underfunded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have much to add to that. I think you went very deep and I know we're tied in the law, but I agree, I think that a lot of, you look at the basic infrastructure of what we are providing is, as, not just public health, but all these services at the King County. We are lacking in funding in these areas. And on wastewater treatment, public health, on Harborview, we need to make sure that we aren't getting to a place where, where these facilities are overflowing and getting to a place where our hospitals are in disrepair. And our, a lot of this comes down to state funding, a lot of this comes to how prioritizing our resources, and I think it requires a lot of engagement from county council members to make sure that we are, we aren't getting to a crisis mode in any of these areas, that we are thinking beyond and thinking beyond the now.
Uh, Pam?
Uh, quick question. Abigail, I don't believe you mentioned how long you've lived in the district screening.
Yeah, I, I lived three blocks south of Madison Street is the city, is the, is the dividing line. And I've lived, I've worked downtown the last four or five years and I've, and I'm a few blocks south of Madison Street. So in January, I moved to, I'm seven blocks to Belltown.
So, so you've lived in the district since you were?
Yeah.
Uh, on the question of making bus fares and transit fares optional, this was roughly a third of the operating budget or nearly so of the transit system comes from fares. You put a big hole on it, I don't know how to put it, I mean, is this philosophy of making payment require fees and fares optional? Is this going to go be part of transit? Is this going to apply to parking, accidents? Where, where, how do you expect to make this work?
I think this is in reference to, I, I believe that we should end fare enforcement on our King County metro services and replace it with a program called Transit Ambassador Programs, where we have people who are in park, so 26% metro is currently funded through fare box recovery. That used to be at 30, 30%. With expanding the Orca Lift, the low income ticket program, fare box recovery drops to I, I am really concerned about the way that we are collecting fares on our transit system. They are fare, fare enforcement who have, went through and part through advocacy for transportation choices, Puget Soundstage, have, have created less criminalized processes of collecting of what happens to somebody when they collect a fare. I don't own a car, I take the bus everywhere, and I am appalled by, I just feel it is unjust the way our fare enforcement officers engage in our community. I believe we need to end that program and transition to a Transit Ambassador Program to help people navigate our transit system. It is confusing and complex. You have tourists coming to town, I think that helping people navigate that system is making a difference. Making sure that these, these individuals are helping people access the services they need and actually, actually deescalating situations. I would like to see us figure out how we can more progressively fund our transit system. In the immediate, we are relying on our fare and, our fares 275 to ride a metro bus. It is, but that is after, after low income people are already paying sales taxes, so they're paying twice. We have to fundamentally rethink how we are funding our metro bus system, but I think as a start, we need to be transitioning. I've seen too many people in fear when fare enforcement get on the bus. I've seen too many people who are disproportionate, or people of color who are disproportionately targeted. And, and I commend Metro for the work they've done to ease that burden, but they are also under a lot of pressure from, from the county council to make sure that we are collecting the fare that we need. But we also aren't thinking bigger about where we are generating revenue across the board in our transit system. And I think there's a slew of options that we should be looking at that the council really hasn't dug into, including VNO and several other, several other options.
Jane?
Okay, so Transportation Choices Coalition, Puget Soundstage may have advised us that it was the council who directed that change in enforcement. I was the sponsor of that legislation. And what we did was to require that Metro do away with their style of enforcement and having some people, usually low income, people of color, disproportionality, disproportionality wise, to have, to get caught up in the criminal justice system. So we changed that from a very owner's fare fee to a $50 one, that with credit for paying right away, it could go down to $25, that could be worked off with some type of community service. We've really made some extraordinary changes in the system. We cannot ignore the need for fare box recovery. I had a lot of constituents contact me and say, what do you mean? I paid my fare, shouldn't everybody? So I introduced legisla, not legislation, I introduced a budget proviso, I'm on the budget leadership team in our biennial budget last year. We got it in there, requiring Metro to come back with recommendations on an income-based fare, including for zero income and low income. That report is due to us a couple of weeks ago. The analysts had it out to go over it. So I'm very hopeful, but we have to look at what revenue we need, but we also have to be reasonable for individuals who do not have the income.
Thank you. I've got time for one more question. Keep it quick, ready?
How much time do I have? Let's quick.
We're, we're over time right now, so do your best.
Listen, listen, in, in just, for the whole, for the whole group, I don't need to ask a question. I've had my hand up the whole time and I don't want to be, I don't want to be chump changed, okay? So then move on.
Anybody else, Doug?
Yeah, man, trying to understand if climate change continues to advance, we're finding it's even more immediate and predictive.
What are you talking?
Climate change. Louder, Doug.
Yeah. Clearly atmospheric carbon is critical to this point, but ultimately, by comparison, nothing else matters. Should that issue be a formalized criteria for every county decision on two levels, prevention, carbon reduction, and infrastructure planning?
Well, I'll take that on. I guess I would love that to happen. Now, I've been addressing it very seriously as chair of the King County Board of Health, we had it on our agenda for next month, to start the process of looking, addressing climate change as the number one public health challenge of our lifetimes. And Dr. Jeff Dushin, our King County medical officer, stated that, I'm working with him, we're coming up to explain on how we're going to deal with this from a public health perspective. You may have seen a story in the Seattle Times today about my new legislation on climate change as a package with council members Val Ducci and Dabowski. We have a three-pond approach, and mine has to do with jump starting, what I'm calling a jump start, to accelerate Metro's transition to a 100% zero emissions bus fleet, van fleet, all county vehicles, all ADA vehicles. I move up that to 2035. My first year I'm elected on the council, Brad Dabowski and I had the legislation to have the executive come back with recommendations on how to have that transition by the year 2040. It's very expensive to do, this is a very exciting proposal, and it would be a law, a code, an ordinance, not a recommendation.
This is why I'm running. This is the reason that I fundamentally think we need a trip on the county council. I put out a plan about two months ago, I love that idea, I love how we're remeasuring the issue of climate change and everything that the county works on, because pretty much everything from transit to housing to how we're approaching homelessness does connect to climate. In September, I put out a plan on what we need to be doing to urgently act on climate. And one of those plans was to move up the transition to electrification, and I'm thrilled that the county listened and looked at my plan, because today, a month before the election, right, they are moving forward on it. And that means that, A, this is why we have to have competitive elections, B, is why we need to make sure our leaders are working urgently, and I don't think they were until you had someone who was demanding that the county council was acting on this. And I'm, it should not just be something we are prioritizing one month before an election, it should be something we are prioritizing every month of January day of the year. And that is not the leadership I have seen, that is what compelled me to run. And transitioning our electric fleet is important. We also need to make sure we are rapidly, rapidly figuring out how we're expanding our transit system. And that is something that, as somebody who is an advocate, and I want to say, you asked this question, it is, advocates are the ones who are, they're showing up, they're demanding these things, and our leaders are following. And we need leaders who, who don't just need, we need the advocates to show up and demand this leadership, but we also have to have leaders who are demanding it on their own, and that is not what I've seen. And it shows. It shows because it's, we finally have a county council that is taking this issue as urgently as we need it.
All right, that's all the time we have. Uh, yes, around the corner.
No, wrap up. [laughter]
Yeah, wrap up our mission.
Uh, sorry. Can we do a quick round of applause for you guys first? Because that was a lot of questions, thank you.
All right, why don't we give you... You know, all the time, you close on. Wrap up. Wrap up.
Yeah, you have to admit it to make your final statement.
Since I went first?
Okay, sure. So I'm asking for your vote. You know me, I lived in this district for a long time. My opponent just moved into the district. She could have run against her sitting council member, Joan McDermott. She took after a woman, a strong feminist woman, and nobody really gets that. I don't know what plan my opponent lives on, I'm sorry. We work very hard on the council. We do not operate in a timeframe where Abigail Door is telling us what we should be doing, so, oh, let's do this, there's an election going on. That's not the way it works in regional government. And I'm offended by that statement. I got the, I got the endorsement not only of the Seattle Times, but also of The Stranger Today and also of the Ballard News Tribune, which I'm very, very proud about. I also have the endorsement from Sally Backshaw and all of the county council members and Dow Constantine, please take a look at my endorsement list. But so much of what has been discussed here, we agree on. We absolutely agree on the policy. I haven't found anything different. But I do not believe that somebody who is a professional campaign manager on important campaigns, yes, has more expertise, more experience, more bold leadership on public policy than I do. It just doesn't add up. So I ask for your support. You know I will continue working for you and with you and be accessible, responsive, and effective in continuing the partnership and the work that I value. Thank you. Thank you.
I really, I do appreciate council member Paul Wells's long service. I really do. And I, I made a decision to run for office because I do not feel like the urgency that my generation is experiencing is being acted upon on the county council, on climate, on housing and homelessness, on transportation. I am not new to this field and I am not new to working in community, to working across agencies. And I'm doing the work. I've knocked on 17,000 doors across this district myself. And people have no clue, not just who represents them, but what the county government does. And the number one issue I hear about is homelessness. I hear about climate a lot, but homelessness is the first thing that's on people's minds. And the issue that used to be on people's minds, the first thing was transit and transportation. And what we did as a region was, we had leadership who was working, and I'm really proud to be, have been a part of that, is we didn't solve traffic, it's not going away, but we have a plan moving forward on how we're going to address it. We're not, we need to do our part on climate change, but we need a plan, we need a, King County has reduced their carbon emissions by 1%. Our goal is to reduce our carbon emissions by 25%. That is not a plan, we are not acting on it, we are not taking this issue as urgently as we need, on homelessness and housing. We need leadership who's bringing people together and not just having subcommittees after subcommittees, but bringing communities together to make sure we are actively building out and funding the housing we really need. I really respect you and I respect all of your time. I also, I, I don't think we should be asking people to wait in line. I think we need to be, what's ahead of my generation is so urgent and I do not see it being acted upon. And I really would love your support and thank you for taking the time to meet with me and meet with us and thank you.
Thank you both.